So. So we're not, so yeah, I guess this lease does not have, it doesn't speak to that. You know, that's something that can be either changed or if we decide at a later time that the rent is no longer appropriate, then I would have terminated the lease at that time, so.
That really doesn't pertain to the motion to refer though, so we need to handle that issue first if we're going to refer it, so. Any other questions on referral, Tom?
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not in the vote, but if it's locked in lease, I think that's not a secure deal for us. So in that case, I would be sure that that got that done.
Okay, Councilmember Kinsman, on the referral.
Thank you. I'm going to refer back to staff as well. I can add comments into staff increase. I mean, if we're just talking about that, that's what I'm, I mean, there's other things like what. Yeah, so referring it back to staff, I think I agree with what you're saying, what Kevin, in the sense of the conversation maybe needs to be. Why do we have this lease and why, when we're just having this conversation of how valuable the real estate is in the, in our very limited harbor basin. And again, some of this might be speaking from ignorance, but just having some conversation of is there any reason that the Forest Service can't be located in a different position within our harbor? I mean, that's, we, that, from what I see and what's been proposed and the grant proposition, what we want to do, that's the only space left in our harbor that has any room to expand. Is that, that corner, that section. I understand there's some security issues potentially, and my question would be, has it been asked for Forest Service to combine with state troopers on their dock? And there, it's a secure space, it seems like, again, this is where the ignorance comes in, seems like there's plenty of space there. And that opens up a different area for the city to develop, whether that's. Anyways, we have a little more control there, even if it's a temporary basis for us when we're trying to vacate the South Terminal, there's more space there for us to park. Even, even if I guess the Forest Service were to decide the lease is up, then they're going to tear everything out. That still gives us some space there. So that's, I know we're talking about referral, and sorry, the sun's drawing my eyes. But that would be my question. So I'd refer to staff if we're just going back, and I'd definitely like to see over 20 years, some kind of increase in lease.
Yeah, so that's definitely, I mean, that's something that can just be added in between first and second reading. So that doesn't necessarily have to be referred back to staff completely for that. So yeah, I mean, that's definitely something that I can, you know, get amended in this lease before bringing it back. As for the state dock, I mean, we don't have control over whether the state allows them to use the dock or not. They own that land, they own the dock, so they have complete control over that. Could the Forest Service be anywhere else? I mean, yes, they could, you know, they're in, they're in normal slips within harbors around the state. You know, they do have a unique setup here. And obviously, you know, they have the right to go through the land as well as the process to request to continue to lease it. And so that's what they're choosing to do instead of going into, you know, normal mortgage until such time that council decides that your time is, your time here is done, very much so. Yeah, that would be something that the council would need to decide.
Okay, on the motion to refer.
To Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Carpenter.
Do you think, thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion to refer. I, I probably have done it in the past, but I tried really hard not to disregard that recommendation. You know, we pay them to do the research and do the work and do the due diligence and come to us with the recommendation. And I think they, we've offered, they've sent, you know, in the ordinance, I'm on this, so that's one. Point, and I, I know it's not, you know, fair, they will, they do all of this other work and therefore we should give them a place in the harbor. But to speak to, actually echo what Councilmember Sherman said earlier about working with our community partners, workers that have huge amounts of work in our community over and above their, kind of, mandates of operating fees. And I feel like we can treat them as a partner. And they also have vessels, they use the space, and the whole point is, I mean, where they are is that they would like to use the warehouse based on land that's proximal to the slip that they're trying to rent, so, yeah, let's see, right. And I feel like, I, well, first, we can cancel the lease at any time, and the whole point is, we do not know what's going to happen with the land acquisition that's been committed. Right now, we're operating without a lease. I don't really see the point of not collecting any revenues. And we could be collecting some revenue, and we could have a lease in place that would protect us if something were to happen. And we tend, terminate the lease at any time, so. I propose to refer it back to staff at this point. Thank you.
Okay, on referring to staff, Councilmember Meyer.
This is a hard one. I think all of us are having a hard time with it in general. I'm very much thinking to not refer it back to staff just because of how many years we've been discussing this. I'm, I feel something is much termination clause, and I just don't know what more staff could do. So I guess one of my questions is, if we voted this down and don't have a lease and aren't negotiating with five, I mean, with the Forest Service anymore, what happens? What, what is the vacating process like for an area that we own the land, but they own the dock and the buildings? Don't, you don't seem to renew. And they also paid, I think, a dollar a year for 50 years, so. What would happen?
If we don't renew the lease, they would be required to remove the improvements that, you know, we can't just allow them to occupy, you know, public space that they aren't, you know, leasing or using in a way that's consistent with our code and charter.
And we don't have a fine frame, I mean.
We haven't had that conversation with them that we, at, at the point when council says we are not going to renew the lease, then we have a conversation with the Forest Service and we start the process. And there will be negotiations around that too, I'm sure. We can't expect them to vacate with 30 days' notice or probably even 60 day notice. So there'll be a negotiation that will have to happen. There may be other considerations that we need to take into account. We would certainly bring it back to council. At this moment in time, I will say that any referral to staff is not going to produce any additional information. Certainly, Councilman Jones has information from 2013, 14, 15, a lot of information. But as I said, when I started the conversation with you, I wanted to articulate that times have changed. We now have new information and new, any decision the council made long ago has, has morphed into a new reality based on where we are now. And again, there is absolutely nothing that council can bring to you that, in referring to staff, that would change any information that has already been provided. It, it could be that we just want, want time to look over Councilman Jones's information, that's all public record. Again, we would not weigh in on that because that's not information that is valid for the conversations that we've been having with the Forest Service and that we have been having with the Harbor Commission and others around development of the harbor. So I, I think perhaps at this point, if, you know, we go to second reading, you voted up or down, and then we move forward.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify a little bit, it's been mentioned by several folks around the table, but I think one of Councilmember Jones's primary arguments was that tonight you've got 95% of the users of the harbor away from town. And I think that the opportunity for the entire community to weigh in on this decision in the middle of fishing season is not the best timeframe for, for public input. Not that October would be much better, but that's, that's what I believe that one of the arguments that he, he stated was, so. Anyway.
Mayor Ellison.
Yes.
This has been on the table for so very long, and people are not paying attention now. They are not going to be paying attention between now and October.
For about 11 years, and we have not heard one comment from, from, well, we've probably heard one or two, but the majority of our comments have been against a long-term lease. And we're talking about a 20-year lease. So anyway, on the motion to refer, can we get a vote on that, please?
Yes. So on the motion to refer. Ann Schaefer is absent. Kathy Sherman.
No.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
No.
Kristen Carpenter.
No.
3-3, and the motion to refer fails.
Okay, we're back to the main motion of approving the lease as proposed here on first reading. Schaefer is gone. Councilmember Kinsman?
No.
I don't know if there's any comments on the main motion, though.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think I alluded to some. I think our space in the harbor is, is very valuable, and if we're not. I guess I see this point that the Forest Service had a sweetheart deal, they've had it, and it looks like we're setting them up for another pretty sweetheart deal. And I think that space could generate greater revenue for our community. That's, that's what I'd say. Again, I think there's other opportunities for, for some of this to be absorbed, other, I mean, for them to be in other places in the harbor. And it sounds like it's pretty consistent with other, other harbors throughout, throughout the state, that's not. What, the situation we have is the unique situation. So that is kind of where I see it.
Councilmember Carpenter, on the main motion.
To leave, yes.
Yeah, there's not a vote. Do you have any question or, do you have any questions or final comments on it?
I'm not sure, I, I think I would urge Councilmember Kinsman to do the math on what another vessel would bring in, the Tenacious, that's one of the longer vessels in the harbor, and if you rent a lease slip by the slip and charge by the slip, if there aren't that many other vessels, I think it would bring in more. And I just, you know, I believe it's set up to be advanced to the city. I'm not sure what else, what more people want in terms of being advanced to the city. So I, it's being done, working in our favor.
Okay, Councilmember Sherman, on the motion.
Yes, I brought this forward. I would be willing to accept an amendment and would even make the amendment if we wanted to make it a shorter term lease, say 10 years, like, seven years. I think five years is too short, considering what we're talking about with harbor reconstruction. But I would be willing to have staff bring this up for a second reading with a shorter term lease by continuing the 16-month clause. If that would make some people feel more comfortable with the lease agreement.
Would that, is that considered a major revision to require?
I don't think it is, because if you read Section 1 of, on page 53, page 1 of the ordinance, and that same language is in all of our, usually we approve leases by resolution, but this one is over $50,000, so it's approved by ordinance. But it's basically giving the manager still the, the ability to negotiate. It's, it's, you know, mostly exactly in the way it's written here, but it may be amended slightly, the actual language of the lease, even with approval of the ordinance.
Okay, is that it?
Which means that she could also negotiate in the, the annual increases or a percentage increase. Yeah, which he usually hasn't in his leases, so. Just didn't in this.
I'm not, actually, I'm a little confused about that part. So yeah, like I said, that's definitely something that will be taken care of.
Okay, Councilmember Jones, on the main motion.
On the main motion, I'm not going to be supporting leasing this as written. I don't think I would support it even on the shorter term. I think that there is some pretty common sense solutions that have been floated in the past on how to still be a good community partner with the Forest Service, still house their boats in our harbor basin. I think that they could probably even keep the warehouse where it is and have slips at the bottom of the adjacent ramps. We can just not have that float in our way for future expansion. However, that has not been even considered at this point. This lease as written is basically just giving the Forest Service everything that they've wanted the entire time, which is a 20-year lease. It goes against all of the recommendations from Harbor Commission. It goes against the majority of our public comment that we've received, and we have received substantial public comment over the last three years. That's another reason why I wanted to see more information brought to us in the packet. None of that was included here. So I think it was pertinent, and I'm a little confused as to why it wasn't shared with us, especially some of it came in just two weeks ago.
It was shared with the council, and there's copies of it on the side here for the public tonight.
Okay. I did not see it in the packet, so I apologize.
Well, it didn't make the packet. You sent it over the weekend.
No, I'm talking about the correspondence from the community that was referenced, that there was none, but there has been. So, yeah, I would be voting against this, and I guess I will yield.
Okay, Councilmember Baylor, on the main motion.
No, did I miss something? I go, we up, remember, give the Harbor Commission the five, seven. Where does the Harbor Commission stand on this proposal? Do we know that?
Yeah, Harbor Commission passed a unanimous resolution supporting this lease with the 16-month clause.
A correction, it did not have a term in their resolution. It just supported a lease with a 16-month clause.
Yes, correct. So they supported a lease with a 16-month clause, which is before you today, a lease with a 16-month clause.
Okay, and then it sounds like that 16-month clause is pretty ironclad. I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around whether it's five years, 10 years, or 20 years, but I have that 16-month clause there. I, I don't, I don't agree with it, so, 20 years out, and I don't know about any kind of raise. There should be raised almost every year. It doesn't sound like there was any thought into that at all. I'd like to see that get addressed for sure. You do that before we, before we open this. So I'm on, that's not with me, thanks.
Councilmember Meyer, on the main motion.
Um, I think I'll put up is the law, the length of the lease, the payment. And then I guess I would like to know, um, those that we vote down on this lease, what are the 16 months in, in question or else? Shorter, longer, does that seem like a good amount of time? You know, that Harbor Commission, that it's two years, so they put 16 months, so I'm curious in council. Everybody likes that amount, or it's either shorter or not, I'm turnating it. Would make everyone happier, that year.
Where did the 16-month come from? Was that a?
So the Forest Service works on a biannual budget, and so if they're going to be moving location, they need time to get everything in line. So they wanted 24 months originally, and I told them that we wouldn't give them more than 16, so, yeah.
Okay, anybody want a second chance for comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We were saying we really, in this space, we cannot produce any more than $10,000 in revenue.
I don't think that that's been assessed.
Okay.
Right now, we're, the status quo is sort of what we're pursuing because we do not know what the longer-term plans of the, the impact of the PIB grant, whether we're getting the funding or not, what we're going to be able to do or not do in that section of the harbor. So we would not enter into any kind of a construction project, renovation project, or anything that would allow that space to be used in alternative ways because we're in a holding pattern on projects that we hope we will get funding for. So I think our perspective in negotiating this lease was that 16 months, which seems maybe like a long time to some, but I will tell you, in the grant world, by the time you get your grant notice and when you sign your grant contract, already two years has passed since we got the raise grant, and we still haven't signed the grant contract yet. And that is a normal situation with federal funding. So 16 months gives us ample time to make any kind of adjustments needed, move the Forest Service out, whatever, but we would certainly not want to be in a position where we had another tenant into that space, another user of that space, where we would be in a similar situation, where we would have to have them vacate in order to do work.
Councilmember Jones.
I just have one comment, as it relates to Councilmember Kinsman's question in terms of revenue. Four vessels that the Forest Service currently has would bring in, depending on their length, would bring in more than the $10,000 if they just rented normal stalls.
That, that is incorrect.
I have three, and it's eight grand a year, so.
I took the 195 feet of dock space that they have and multiplied that by the mortgage rate, so I don't know how it would, and that came out to around $5,000 or $6,000.
I guess I will speak on another side, too. So I would definitely disagree they would bring in over $10,000. You only can park on one side of it with any kind of big vessel. At a minus tide, it goes dry on the side of the shoreline. So you can't park anything there during that time. 70 feet on the other side is roughly $4,000 max. It's only 70 feet long, that dock.
I think the question is getting a little construed here, so we don't own that dock, so we can't rent that dock surface out. What my comment was in reference to is the total length of their four vessels and what revenue that would produce if they were renting regular slips like a regular fisherman at their regular rate. And it would be close, maybe not over, but very close to $10,000 a year.
I think one of the things also that's been articulated to us is the Forest Service needs secure storage for their vessels. And so we would need to be able to provide that sort of storage with, that allows them to lock or keep people from going onto their docks. So I don't think that they would consider, and I'm not. Are you guys concerned about, I mean, would you be able to use regular dock space?
Absolutely, absolutely. Can I?
Yeah, please. Can you come up?
Shall we move, are we moving to suspend the rules, or?
It's up to council. Suspend the rules and go up top.
I would move to suspend rules. This is valuable information for me if I want to know how I'm going to vote on this one.
Okay, come up, Steve.
So I've got a couple of comments and a couple of questions, and then certainly happy to answer any questions. So first, in relation to what Mr. Baylor said in relation to price, I thought there was something in there where the price was set on fair market value.
That's on the initial.
So it seems like to address Mr. Baylor's concerns, if it's not a major change, and that would be the question, then you could do a review over so many years for what fair market value is.
Yes, I believe passing the ordinance gives Helen the right to then add that phrase in there that it would be reviewed annually for fair market value or some, something like that.
We do a CPI base.
So that would be, that would be one comment. And then the question was?
On security.
Security, absolutely. So obviously, running law enforcement, the best about it, there's a certain requirement for security, and you've got an evidence locker there and different things, so. So, yeah, we would be.
How does that differ from other harbors in the state that just have their vessels in normal slips? Or are they secured?
Evidence locker is somewhere else, but, but again, we've talked a little bit about limited space in our other, you know, facility, and so anyway, that, that works out pretty, pretty well for us. So.
Yes, I understand this works out really, really well for you guys, and that's great. But I'm, my question is twofold. Thank you for bringing up what potentially revenue their vessels could bring if they were to rent.
So that was a little, that was a little bit of misspeaking also. So the two vessels that would be there were the Tenacious, which is the biggest vessel that we have, as well as the Fairbanks, which is the law enforcement boat. The Pac-Man is a landcraft, and, and we, we moored that there, but it comes in and out more often. And then we've got a works skip that's like 20-foot that parks there occasionally, but also moves in and out. So the two primary vessels takes up that 70-foot space that Kevin's referring to, and that's the Tenacious and the Fairbanks. But we still have those other vessels that, that service the sound.
Has there been any conversation with the state in using, in leasing or using? Again, from what it looks like to me, there's space there, and I know there's other experts here. It's secure, so it's an already existing place, and it frees up somewhere else in our.
So we've talked about it a little bit, but that's not what we're pursuing, that's not what we're asking for. We're going through the process, and we're asking for a lease for the city as we have since 1965. And so, you know, I, I like and I appreciate, and I, I, the comments of partnership and collaboration and working together, and so I value that. And that, that's how we all kind of get along in small rural communities. So some of the comments that were made really kind of lean towards, you know, not in the spirit of that, so. We're not a business. We provide a public service, so.
Okay, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, so you say that you need gated stalls. In what area you have three vessels that tie up in regular public stalls? Why, why can't you do that here?
It's not what I'm asking for, Mr. Jones.
But it is something that you, that could be done. I know that's not what you're asking for, but your vessels could park in a normal slip.
I think we do have to kind of reevaluate what our needs are, and right now, this is what. is what, this is what...
Sure. Councilman Sherman?
You know, Ranger, now it's, are the vessels in Whittier-Girdwood District or Chugash District, Quirripah District?
You know, they've downsized their vessels, and I don't know...
And are they law enforcement?
No. We've got one that moves back and forth called the Blackstone, but that works out of sewer as well, so it's...
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other comments online on this?
Yes, 12:03.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm leaning towards voting yes on this first reading, but in knowing that there's a second reading, because I, to be honest, haven't made up my mind entirely. Well, not knowing that there's a second reading, we'll see, I guess, how the vote goes. But my main frustration is that this is the only avenue that the Forest has been going down, and this lease has been taking over the city for, I think, the entire time I've been on council. And it doesn't seem like that there has been a lot of other thinking on the side of the Forest Service. Not trying to say that we don't want to be good community partners, because that is something that we've been going back and forth about in the talks about the state area and how it's secured, and has been brought up every single time. I appreciate the other information. I don't think that I need more information on this. I think it's just a difficult decision, but I don't know that continuing to negotiate with the Forest Service is going to get back out of the box thinking that we have been passing this down the line to try to get it. And I'm kind of serious, if we don't do this lease negotiation, then it's going to kind of force the Forest Service to possibly look at that state area. I mean, we've been trying to figure that out for the past five years, and trying to see if I'm seeing a possibility. I know that there's the 16-month term in there, but that's just pushing it down the line, because I don't know if the Forest Service employees do, and each other thinks they have a 20-year long term. Yes, there's that 16-month out, but I think the city has been pretty clear that we don't want to go into a long-term lock-in agreement like we're with 16-year lease, and our harbor is much smaller, and we're just running out of room. And I've scheduled for 16 months termination, but I hardly even just want to know if another area is better because we're trying to change this, and I feel pretty frustrated that that has not been looked at very seriously. And I think it has taken a lot of time from our city employees, from our harbor commission, from the council. I think the city is really, really trying, the council is really trying to be good partners with the Forest Service. Sorry, I said Forest Service. But I'm having a hard time with this. I really, 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 really want Forest Service to look at other alternatives, just to say, yes, this is without, we have a plan B.
So, I can speak...
That's what I'm headed. I think you need to change your position last year, and right now, I am very for whether the city gets a pass this week right now. I am 50/58, and that's where I'm at.
So, this is Steve. I can speak to that a little bit. I would say that, I would say that the state probably isn't going to be accommodating to that. We've had kind of some preliminary discussions, or at least I personally have, but our law enforcement folks have. We've sat down with the city and looked at the harbor and looked for alternative places to go without a whole lot of success. So, one of the best solutions was kind of refurbishing the current space we're in, to push us up against the wall if there was some dredging done, as far as actually moving us to a different location. And we've, we've looked at that, I can say, I think, and haven't come up with a real positive solution. I think it was mentioned that maybe the build, the design build would challenge the engineers and maybe come up with another option, but currently, I don't know that there is one that, that, I mean, the best solution originally, when there was a proposal to utilize some of that same space, was just to move us further back towards the, towards the seawall, towards the parking lot. So, you know, we've looked at that over and over, and it really appears to me, and people will disagree, but, but that we're in the best location that we can be without impacting other harbor functions. So, that's just my humble opinion.
This isn't a negotiation between Forest Service and the city at this point in time. The city just needs to decide if we're going to pass this on first reading or not. So, Carpenter on the main motion?
I think she spoke.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any further comments on that?
No, I want to make the other comment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Baylor, your last words?
Yes, I think the, I'm kind of insane, though. I'm thinking about voting for this, knowing that there's going to be a second reading. But here's the thing with them, I'm going to, I would love for the second hearing, I would hope that it would give us a little bit of time, and I hope that the harbor commission can come in and give us clarity on, on this, and whether they stand as a group. That would be helpful for me. I don't know what configuration works best in the harbor. I'd hear from them, they're supposed to do that. However, I do know a little bit about leasing, and to say, well, we negotiate a fair market value. This is not a fair market value lease. You want some exclusivity to this. You want your own private area to this. You're getting, but nobody else is getting down that harbor. There's got to be a cost for that, and say, well, sometime in the future, we'll negotiate that, we'll think about it. That doesn't cut it, I mean, I think for a second reading, I would like to know exactly what those rates will be, what those costs will be. Because for me, locking in for 20 years is, that's, that's not very good business. I think that was fully neglected on staff, or the water department, or whatever. But this is not a fair market issue, because you're giving something about that nobody else can purchase or get. So, best of all that. Thank you.
Okay, last chance. Anybody, any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I would agree that this is not a fair market value. You know, I think there, there's many people in the harbor basin who gladly pay this, even if it meant putting in their own improvements afterwards. I think that there is plenty of common sense solutions that would work for both entities, and they just have not been even considered, and that's a little bit disheartening for me, and I will not be supporting this. And, yeah, I would like to see us decide tonight, not push it on to a second reading.
Okay, ready for any objection to the vote?
Counselor question? On ordinance 1207, Kristin Carpenter?
Yeah.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
No.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Casey Kinsman?
No.
Ken Jones?
No.
Motion carries 4-2.
May I ask for clarification? So, on the second reading, I just want to make sure that we understand what the expectations are of council members, so that we provide the information you need. I heard that lease increase, possibly a reduction in the number of years in lease? I don't know quite where everyone, what kind of guidance you could give to us so that we would present something that met your expectations.
Senator Jones?
I have some curiosity on what would constitute a major change, because now we're, you know, we're talking term, we're talking price escalation clauses. To me, that's, both of those are kind of a major deal. Maybe there's some city code on that, on that one.
I'm not 100% sure either. I believe that the Section 1 of the ordinance does give leeway in changing the terms of the lease, which is why Helen's asking for council input on the terms. I will get with an attorney or do some research to ensure, and if it has to come for another first reading, we will do another first reading.
But either way, just to just have a little clarity, there could be a conversation, discussion, because we don't want to make adjustments, whether it would be adjustments for another first reading or adjustments to the second reading that didn't meet council members' expectations or desires.
I think all of the backup material that was provided after the fact this time should be included. If you're, are you shooting for a 4 to 3 vote, or are you shooting for a 7 to 0 vote? Because if you want everybody supporting it, I think you need to lessen the term, I think you need to have an escalation clause for the lease value. Those are the things that I heard that would get another vote, yeah.
Here, Allison, I would, I would suggest either, and I know it is time-consuming for stuff, either the lease is reviewed annually or biannually, or I mean, every two years? Is that biannually, I think? That, I think that would be useful, especially considering what we're facing coming down the road. And that also would give us the opportunity to potentially increase the, the value based on...
Yeah, I mean, what, I can just tell you what will end up coming back to you. It'll be an annual CPI increase.
And that increases based off fair market or whatever?
No, it's based off of what the current rent is, and then whatever the CPI increase over the last year was, and we would just increase by that percentage. That's how we do it in all the other leases. Again, I do really apologize. I don't know. I think I was probably just so caught up in the term determination part of this negotiation that that was an unfortunate oversight on my part, so I will apologize for that.
Our assessor just got done telling us that land values were increasing 9% half a year or something like that at this point in time. That, you know, that changes over, over time, but I don't know what the CPI was last year, but I don't, I don't know.
As Kevin was saying, the CPI is our standard?
Yeah, it's, because that would make it consistent with all other leases, yeah.
Well, this is the appropriate space. I would like to see what other options could be used in that space. Maybe those for the harbor commission. I, I think there's, again, that's a pretty large tract of the harbor that's tied up for one user.
I would just say that the Forest Service has put in a letter of interest. They're going through a process. We're now at the culminating moment of that process, and at this determining time, we can talk about the netmending float or what that space is best for it, but we also need to make a decision on...
Renew the lease or not?
Are we renewing the lease or not?
Which?
But not renewing the lease. Are we entering a renewed lease, or are we not?
And I guess my other question is, I, I know this has been a conversation for a long time. It seems like there's a lot of culminating things right now. We have some, we're waiting on some money. Why now? Why are we deciding to enter a lease right now? What, in 24 months, all this could look completely different. I know there's the 16-month clause, I guess, why at this point in time?
The lease expired.
Well, it's been expired for...
Well, we've negotiated since it expired. Not that it hasn't been expired for years. We started negotiating before it expired, and it's taken us this long to get to this place.
So, when did the lease expire?
2020. Yeah.
2020, it's 2023, that's years.
Um, yeah, I mean, you know...
I'm just curious, I mean, obviously, it's already been voted on. I'm just curious, why at this point?
Because this is just, it's taken this long to get here, and now it's, you know, they've gone through the process, they deserve to receive a hand share after working their way through the process, and I don't think that, again, the council needs to make a decision on this process, and that's what it comes down to. You know, we can continue down as it has been, and they can continue to sit there rent-free. That's one thing. Or we could start collecting $10,000, and then also kick them out, to be frank, whenever we want. So, again, I would just say, we have a process, they've gone through the process, and now they're requesting that...
Sure. And I guess at my point, I see we can kick the can down the road for someone else, and we can rip the Band-Aid off of them. So, that's just my only comment, and I know we're past what we're looking at, so, thank you. And that's not to say I don't appreciate staff's work on this, either.
Yeah, Councilmember Carpenter.
I think one has been noted, when this came before the harbor commission in March, I think it was March 15th meeting, and I attended the meeting. So, that was the time when fishing wasn't happening, and I don't think there were any other fishermen besides folks sitting on the harbor commission who came to comment that day, maybe one of them. But it wasn't a heavily attended meeting, and it was the culmination of this lease request having gone through the process of being reviewed by the harbor commission, and the harbor commission voted in support of it. Just wanted to make that note for the record. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, right now, the question is, the manager asked for what, what you wanted to see in this ordinance to, to make it more palatable for, for supporting, yeah. Did, did you get enough?
I think I have a general understanding. We'll, we'll talk to the Forest Service, see what we can do. Again, the basic premise is to renew the lease with the 16-month out clause, which we believe is the critical element of this contract. And we can have conversations, we'll bring something back for the second reading, and then, as Kevin said, at this point in time, council really needs to be the one that makes the decision. There's really no more information we can provide, but we can clarify the lease rate and the lease charge, and make it perhaps more palatable, and, and we'll bring it to you for that reason, and then we'll see where we go.
Okay, and if, just for clarity, if, if it's determined that those are considered major changes, we will come back as a first reading?
As a first reading, yeah.
And there's always opportunity in second reading to make changes again, and if there are changes made at that meeting that are major, then it's brought back again for another second reading and another thing. So, there's still plenty of opportunity to make comments on this issue, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's something that Councilmember Carpenter said that I would like to respond to. I'm not sure if this is the right moment, or if I should wait for my council comments.
If it pertains to this ordinance that was still on, then I would say you can make the comments.
Okay, the comment you made about being on the record, that harbor commission meeting was not well-attended, I think that needs to be refuted, because there was, there was audience there. There was a representative of CDFU there who provided a letter to the commission and to council. And also, this resolution regarding the lease rule was passed during a time and a meeting when the netmending float and airplane float was still included in the conceptual PNP drawings. So, since that has been removed, there has been a substantial uptick in audience participation, probably the most I have ever seen, for members of the fleet and the pilot community coming in and seeking a solution. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Staff is good, I think, with what we need at the second reading, or again, first reading, whatever it turns out to be.
Yeah.
Okay, unfinished business, we have done miscellaneous business, our pending agenda. agenda. We got, we got the Sheridan Alpine Association, met the guest speakers at the next meeting?
Yes.
I would, I might be speaking out of order a little bit, but tell me if, if it's a bad idea. But I think that we should discuss the disposition of the current airplane and float so that it's, we should at least have the discussion so that it's not slated for disposal before council has a chance to.
Do you want an engineered report giving the status? Because I think that ultimately is probably more important than anything. Is, is this a fixable thing and at what cost?
That, that'll be up to council, whether they want to spend, spend money on that or not. I just heard today there was some comments that there was some concern that that would be destroyed before they could talk about it. So, so maybe an agenda item to, to discuss. That wouldn't be a, a bad thing, which, you know, would include whether we want to spend money on engineers. I'm not ready to debate that now, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I do think you're out of order. But I'm gonna say, I, I think it could become part of the South Harbor report, and we could see the engineering reports. And if all of us continue to read the minutes and attend the Harbor Commission meetings, we'll be up to date on where they stand with the float plane and the net mending station. And, I mean, don't get me wrong, I am in favor of that. I don't want to walk past any more nets mended on the docks. But I don't think it needs to be an agenda item.
Can we get a report with the South Harbor rebuild report that includes the disposition of, what's the disposition of everything down there this going way? What, what is, I haven't heard what the disposition is. Where are all the piling going? Where are the floats going?
Okay.
We haven't ever heard that, I don't think.
It's all going to landfill. It's in the contract. We had a discussion about not...
There may be scrap opportunities for some metal, but everything else in the contract is going to landfill.
Okay, well, that's, that's my concern, is that that float will go to the landfill before, then they're probably useful. For some people, they're useful.
There's no other place to park an airplane in, in the community.
Yeah, we'll have comments here in a minute, but I just know that a lot of those docks from the last time we did a, a rebuild are, are all over Hawkins Island at cabin after cabin is, is where they're at. So I, I don't think the landfill. I think it's worth having on the agenda to discuss.
Well, she'll put it in a report in the packet under the South Harbor, right, for next meeting?
We're contracted. We have a contract, so we'll, we'll give you all the things that we have to do, the things we can do, the things that could be discussed. There are some things that just aren't on the table.
Yeah, I would, I would disagree that you were out of order on that. I think that you were well within your mayor's rights to suggest agenda items. And I would like to move, as a pending agenda, I would like to see an action item come for us, the Harbor Commission's resolution that is currently on its way to us. That resolution's gonna come before us, and I think that that should be a discussion with an action item that we take, whether that action is directing staff to evaluate it further. You know, maybe that's what we decide. Maybe we don't. Maybe we do nothing with it. But I think that it would be, prove this council to have the discussion prior to the second reading of the U.S. Forest Service. Doc, please.
Any councilor want to agree to having that on the agenda?
I'm seconded by.
Okay, so.
So that's a Harbor, Harbor Commission recommendation for review of, or for consideration of a airplane float and a net mending float, correct?
Um, I have it right here.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it says.
Yeah.
Yes.
That they want funding for an airplane float and a, um, net mending float. That's all it says.
Says that we believe the existing float can be repaired and relocated to the North Harbor?
No, I don't think it says that.
Let me pull it up.
It's very vague. I might need you to write the agenda item, because I'm not exactly sure what it meant when it was given to us.
Here is the resolution. Resolution of the Harbor Commission of the City of Curdova, Alaska to the Curdova City Council of the City of Curdova, Alaska, requesting funding to relocate or replace the old airplane float. Whereas, due to cost increases in South Harbor rebuild, the budget did not allow for a net mending float. And whereas, the airplane float for many years has been used as a convenient location for net mending for gin litters and sanders. And whereas, the Harbor Commission believes that it is possible to refurbish the airplane float, relocate to the North Harbor. And whereas, if the cost of repairs outweighs the cost of a new replacement float, then the Harbor Commission would request additional funding and now therefore be resolved. On the 10th day of May 2023, this passed unanimously.
It doesn't say anything about the Forest Service dock, though.
No, it is.
It says relocate.
So I don't know what you want council's action to be, just so I know how to write an agenda item.
Like this to come to us and for us to discuss it.
Okay. Usually when recommendations from a commission come to council, they come, like, as a report, and they're given. Then council says, okay, we're gonna do something about this, or, okay, we're not.
Well, we just, they're just asking for it to be on the agenda as, as a discussion item and put to resolution as backup to that discussion item.
Okay. He's been saying action item, though, so I didn't understand.
I'd like to see us, let's start with discussion, and then if it needs to be, I mean, that, that discussion is gonna go somewhere. It's either gonna go, is it worth it? Or it's gonna be, yeah, let's look for funding for, for getting it done. Or let's fund an engineer to look at it, and then we'll decide if we're gonna fund it. But we need to have that discussion first, and now is not the appropriate time to continue that. Anything else for the pending agenda? Do you have anything they want to?
We brought it up last. I don't know how to move this anymore forward, but under upcoming meetings, just a discussion on code update in regards to sales tax. And it sounds like we had a work session loosely planned for spring/summer. Do we have any more information on when? I imagine, does Holly need to be in town for this conversation, or is this...
She's prepared. We will have something ready to go in late May, and then we just have to schedule a work session.
Thanks, at least for an update on that. Again, talking about lots of expenses, and we need to start talking about ways to pay for some of these expenses. Conversation still yet. But thanks for that, too.
Anything else anybody has for the pending agenda? And then we'll move on to audience participation. Anything at all, doesn't have to be on the agenda, whatever you want to talk about, come on up.
David Jenka. I think one of the unfortunate things that took place was letting those old docks, when the North Harbor was replaced, just be taken by people. They were, they were well beyond their lifespans. They were raw styrofoam. There are places in the sound where that stuff is, is half-buried on the shoreline, because people just hauled it out there, tied it off, and thought, oh, maybe we'll use it. And that styrofoam is plastic, and it's, it's hazardous to fish and wildlife. There are places that it was just anchored without permits in state marine parks. It was used to go between a floating dock and shoreline to be constantly up and down with raw styrofoam. And it just ripped them apart, and they just disintegrated out there. They do not belong anywhere but in the landfill. And you should do a field trip and take a look at that float plane dock. It is beyond repair, I would say, but we should have an engineer take a look at it. It is well beyond its life as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? Seeing none, we will go on to council comments then. Councilmember Carpenter. Council comments, councilmember Carpenter?
Yes. Yeah, I, I just need specific comments. I appreciate that. We have my, um, I just need to thank the staff for the work they did to, um, staff and to the U.S. Forest Commission. Thank you.
Councilmember Baylor?
Yes, please do the discussion. I'll remember, sometimes questions are asked, you get answers to the public, and also I'll have to hear from the public. When I vote for the Public Commission meeting, there's always a topic meeting, but they may be less than that. And, you know, it's what you want to do. You want to ask these questions before we take a vote. As my vote, we got seven people, when we take the next vote, I'm not told on voting yet, so I'm just gonna affect the meeting, like, there's changes, particularly that, that lease amount, I think it's the chief. I would sort it out, a set amount, raised every year, this $700 amount, maybe we can't do that, but, 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 like I said, that's something winning, but the general public has not, you know, you have. It's a good discussion, and, you know, appreciate everybody being here, and I would like to send some information from the Harbor Commission, and I would go ahead to the second vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yes, thank, thanks for the conversations we had today. It was good. It was informative. I know I've come here and I always learn things, but I'm also grateful to have a little bit of input. And I feel stewardship being in this position is, is really to represent the community. And, and resoundingly, what I heard from the community was nothing in one form of or another in favor of the Forest Service having that, or continuing with that lease. So that's what, you know, I felt I tried to represent here tonight. That is in no way any saying I don't appreciate or support the Forest Service. And I know they are a public service, and I'm grateful for a lot of the work they do in our community. It's a beautiful place, and then part of that is because of their efforts in this community. With that, I, I, I feel like, and I've heard, that, that space, that exclusivity space in the harbor could be used in a better, maybe more efficient and productive way for our entire community. So, again, I look forward to having some more conversation on this. I, if we are moving forward, I think I can agree with councilmember Baylor on that $10,000 is, I know it's just for raw ground. I know they've done all the improvements. It's a, it's a pretty low amount, and I know that there's private entity that would step in and gladly do some, if given the opportunity, which isn't up for question, but it's, it's an exclusive deal for the Forest Service, and there is value on that exclusivity. So, again, thank you for the conversation. Thank you for staff. Just because we, you know, this isn't saying that the work you put into this lease isn't good, and I just don't necessarily agree that maybe they should have a lease at all. So that doesn't mean you didn't do your job in negotiating the lease. So, thank you.
And thank you, councilmember Meyer.
Yeah, um, thanks. I, I do enjoy that, having a long discussion about it, and hearing everyone's interview, and expecting everyone to be sort of, but I, I'm just long-term about it in general. And hearing from the community, you know, the whole time I, I haven't really heard a lot of positivity in renewing it. I think that we have, sort of changed when that, in our, because we really do want to be good partners with the Forest Service. They do add a lot to the community, and it is really important relationships. But that, um, fought in the harbor, and, but towards the lease and everything, there's just been, um, typical, typical decisions. I, I do really appreciate everybody's input, discussion, and all of the time that they put into that stuff to be proven.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sherman?
Oh, sure. I'll echo everybody's comments. It's been a good discussion. I think we were given a good amount of information, and I guess I would encourage, I tried really hard to read all the minutes of the other commissions, and so that I understand the issues. And if I don't, I go talk to staff or the Harb, or the commissioner of the commission, the chair. So I encourage everybody to do that. I really think it's important that we put out some public information on ordinance 1205 and 1206, just as a courtesy. I think it would be really nice to let people know that, that this has changed, that if you're gonna need a rough box, you're gonna have to pay for that. I just think that somehow, I don't even know what words, something like that. And also, especially the garbage placement. I know personally, my garbage pickup time changed from 12:30 to 7:30, and I didn't know that. And so I called and asked and learned, but that changed without notice. So that, you know, put it on the webpage, in the newspaper, whatever, that would be great. Facebook. Thanks, Dave Jenka, for your report. It is really nice, and it makes me read all the RCA things. And the biggest word that is ringing in my ears tonight that you said is complacency. And boy, oh, boy. That's what got us into this mess in the first place. So, that housing work session this afternoon at noon was just incredible. I really learned a lot. It is, there was a lot of public comments on the street an hour after that work session. And I know, I think councilwoman Jones posted something on Facebook and got us an audience. So that was really great. And it was just a very useful work session. And I just wanted to update everyone. The museum, we do have a new director coming, but there's a lot of other things that staff and volunteers or historical society has been doing. We have revamped our website, and it will be up, and we're hoping by June 1st. And it will offer to the public and to researchers all across the country and the world, opportunities to access our collection, which includes photographs, and opportunity to access our newspaper database, which we will have everything from 1904 to about 2012, I think, in a searchable database online. And so we're anxiously working towards that goal. And I think that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
No comment.
Okay, I don't have anything productive to add, so we don't have an executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then we go objection. We'll be adj. Okay, then we go object, we'll be adj.